Perfect. Good afternoon. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners' Public Hearings Regarding the 2022-2023 Budget. It is 1:31 PM. My name is Ty Menzger, Chair of the Board. To my left is Vice Chair, Commissioner Gary Edwards. Commissioner Mahia will be joining us just in a moment. The purpose of this public hearing is to accept and consider public comment on the proposed 2022-2023 budget. This particular session is regarding the following offices and departments related to law and justice: the Clerk's Office, District Court, Prosecuting Attorney's Office, Sheriff's Office, Coroner's Office, Superior and Juvenile Courts, Public Defense, and Pretrial Services. This is a hybrid public hearing. Those wishing to testify have joined in person, by Zoom, emailed and commented, or mailed in comment. If you wish to testify, please visit the Thurston County homepage online. Select Announcements of Public Hearings on the left-hand side. The information to join this public hearing remotely has been posted there. If you do not wish to testify but would like to listen and follow along, please watch our live stream through the Thurston County YouTube channel, which will help us manage attendance. Robin Campbell, Assistant County Manager, will provide information on the topic of these particular -- and that's on an office-by-office basis. An office or department representative will be available to answer questions. I will read names on a sign-up sheet, and then we will ask if anyone on the Zoom wishes to testify. You do not need to sign up or follow any particular process for that. You will have four -- this is a little different than our normal public hearings. You will have four uninterrupted minutes to testify and/or ask questions to an elected official or department director. The elected official or department director will then answer questions or may follow up at a later time and give you that indication. The same citizen will then have two minutes to provide any follow-up comments to the responses that were provided. None of that time may be given to another speaker. When you are called on, please state your name and area of the county in which you reside for the record. We're going to open this session here. We're going to go as long as it takes to get through these law and justice departments. The public hearing is open. Robin will provide background information, and we're going to start with the Clerk's Unless you have a different proposed --
Thank you. We're going to start with Superior Court. But before we turn it over, I'm going to get this -- see if I can't make the slideshow. Yep, great. So, good afternoon and thank you, Commissioners. And we are in the final stretch of adopting the 2022-2023 Thurston County budget. You are today, and tomorrow you will hold public hearings. This is the schedule. This afternoon, we're about to hear from the Law and Justice Offices and Departments. Then at 4 o'clock, General Government; 6 o'clock, the Capitol Improvements Plan; and at 6:15, open time on any part of the budget. Tomorrow will be Transportation and Environment and Land Use at 1:30; 2:30, Health and Human Services; 4 o'clock will be the hearing on the revenue; and again, an open time tomorrow evening when I'll give an overview of the budget, and again, open time for any part of the questions about the budget. This is the high-level summary of the budget. As you can see, revenue in 2022 is anticipated to be just shy of $524.7 million. And expenditures in your preliminary proposed budget are $514.4 million in 2022. This is the highest budget that I have seen in my time at the county, and possibly the highest budget ever in the county. We'll get into the reasons for that later. And then '23, you see it start to go down to $200 -- $412.1 million in revenue, $452.4 million in expenditures in '23. So, that is the big picture. As you stated this afternoon, I will introduce each office and department. Then I will ask who from that officer department is here, and they will have an opportunity to say a few words if they would like to. Then each citizen who would like to comment to the Board of County Commissioners or ask questions of the official from the officer department will have four minutes. The official will respond if questions are asked, and the citizen may have an additional two minutes after the response time. And then, after all the offices and departments have been heard, we'll recess to the next We're going to start off with Superior Court. The court is governed by nine elected judges, and the court administrator, Misty Butler-Robinson. The court, quite simply, hears civil and criminal cases and conducts the DUI drug court. Just that is their core mission. They do a lot more than that, I know, but that is the core. This year in the budget, the Board has provided treatment sales tax funding to continue the Safe Babies Court Coordinator position that has grant revenue that comes with it. If the grant is not extended, there is treatment sales tax funding in this budget. You've added positions to support the Ninth Judge. You've added a jury administrator position associated with the COVID backlog for Chandler Court, and increased funding for the costs associated with court security collective bargaining agreement. The total budget for Superior Court is just over 50 FTEs. In the general fund is the main source of funding for Superior Court, $7.3 million in '22, $7.4 million in '23, and in total funds, $8.4 million in '22, closer to $8.6 million in 2023. And who is with us from Superior Court?
Judge Wilson.
We have Judge Wilson with us.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you, Judge Wilson. Go ahead.
Great. I do want to start by introducing the members of the bench who have joined us today, and thank you all for joining us. So, we have, I believe, all the judges: Judge James Dixon, Judge Carol Murphy, Judge Christine Schaller, Judge John Skinder, Judge Chris Lanis, Judge Sharonda Mamillo, and Judge Indu Thomas. And we have our judge appointee, Allison Zip, who's here today, and we'll be swearing her in this afternoon, 4 o'clock. So, I want to thank -- start by thanking the Commissioners for your really hard work. We know that you have very difficult decisions, and we appreciate the proposed budget, including most of our highest priorities for the coming biennial. We are grateful for the support of the Ninth Judge position, both the judge position that was legislative and Commissioner's support earlier this year, as well as the staff support that will make our judge successful. We have put forward one reconsideration request, asking that you consider funding our second highest priority, which is to fund an assistant court administrator. In very brief highlight, the reason that that is our second highest priority request behind the support for the Ninth Judge is because, over the last five years, pre-pandemic and during the pandemic, the judges have determined that our court administrator is reactive to so many challenging issues of the day, and we want her to be strategic and help us plan efficiencies and strategic planning so that we can not just be reactive, but we can be proactive and strategic. We believe that we are a lean and mean organization, flat compared to many other organizations, and we did not make this request lightly. We believe it's critical to supporting the efficient court operations. Misty Robinson is our new court administrator. Our prior court administrator served us for more than five years. This request comes from the judges. We've seen an experienced, highly capable court administrator, and a new court administrator who's very capable and comes with lots of experience. Both of them experiencing that they spend 95% of their day addressing the day's challenges and the week's challenges, and we want to have a position that the court administrator can delegate those tasks to and help us be strategic. All the judges are joining me today because they want you to know how important this position is, and we are hopeful that you will reconsider. I will note that the cost annually is approximately $150,000. We came up with a proposed approach to budgeting by retiring a juvenile court position and saving the county with the funding of this position about $43,000 a year. And again, we're hopeful that you'll reconsider our request and find a way to prioritize it. I am open to questions on that request or anything else about the Superior Court operations on our budget. Again, thank you for your efforts. Thank you for the preliminary proposed funding of all of our other priority requests. I'll invite any questions at this time.
I'll go right to the citizen comments unless the Board has a burning question. And now, we're going to address some of these reconsideration requests later in the week. Okay. So, I don't have a sign-up sheet. I know Mr. Pettit's here. I'm going to call him first, and then we'll go from there.
Good afternoon, Commissioners and Judges. In reviewing your basic information on your budget, it does seem you're running a pretty lean machine. Your Superior Court costs less with 50 employees than public defense costs with their 45 employees. So, I got to give a -- if I had a hat, I'd take it off to you. I understand that you're efficient. I've had an opportunity to meet a few of you. Thank goodness, not under any criminal charges or anything. But I understand that some of your facilities are in rather degraded condition, which causes you some additional problems. So, a couple of questions. First of all, I want to make a comment here. I did appreciate that comment regarding being proactive as opposed to being reactive. Proactive gives a direction. Reactive means you're never carrying the ball into the right spot. You're already behind it, and it's a problem. It'll always be a problem, and for this particular group of people, they need to have the support for that. A position of that nature is far more important than an additional assistant accounting manager or some of the other positions that may be lingering right now. So, I'd like to -- opening this up just a little bit for a couple of questions. Is there -- and this to the judges, I guess. Is there some particular additional needs that you see that -- well, we have a two-year budget. Is there something out here within the next foreseeable two years that just because you know you're only getting a piece of the pie, that we're going to choose not even to ask for? Because I know you deal with a lot of people that have a lot of issues, drugs, and everything. Is there something that can be added to this program for you, and your particular program, that would be beneficial? Now, I also understand that currently you're split up. In other words, you have some over there in Tumwater, you have some here, you have some over here, I think, on Chandler Court, courtrooms and everything. Is that something that needs a lot more work to get straightened out in a better fashion? That can be a very workable program and perhaps reduce the overall frustration of trying to schedule everybody every direction, along with perhaps the clerk of the Board. So, there's my first question. What can we do to make it even better than your plea for being able to have an assistant court administrator?
Mr. Pettit, are you done with your four-minute?
My four minutes.
Okay. Very good. Judge, you're up.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Pettit. I'll start with the issue of are there other things we didn't include in our budget requests for the biennial request? There's always things that additional funding could address other priorities, but we don't have new priorities for the next two years that we haven't emphasized and prioritized. That's not to say that we don't have space needs, and we're working on those. We have near-term and long-term space needs. I think the Commissioners fully understand that back -- as far back as 2015, we've had security experts and court experts tell us that our current facilities don't address security or meet minimum security needs, and the capacity isn't where we need it to be. That said, the longer-term plan of revisiting a justice center is something that we need to focus on in the next few years in terms of strategizing. In the near term, we are working with the other county offices to maximize our use of the Chandler facility, to make sure we're using it as many days as we can run out trials. And then, as the Building 1 occupants move to the atrium, and the -- some of the Building 2 occupants from Superior Court Building, Clerk's Office, and Prosecutor move to Building 1, we look forward to working on remodeling the side of the building that we don't presently occupy. It's not as large as some might imagine. It might give us one more courtroom and some staff offices. It's not a long-term solution, but it's a good next-step solution. So, in terms of space, that's what we are looking forward to working on in the near term and the longer term. Of course, we also have separate funding streams that we're pursuing for COVID backlog under ARPA and the Blake funding, all of which the Commissioners -- again, I want to say thank you for helping us, and we are making progress in both those areas. I hope I addressed your questions, Mr. Pettit. Commissioner Menzger, any follow-up that you wanted me to address?
I don't have anything. Mr. Pettit, you get two minutes to kind of respond.
Thank you. I appreciate the judge's response. I think that the -- there's a lot of saga, a lot of questions that have to be asked about what is the best facility? Are we ever going to be able to make, you know, another facility that's going to match for the overall total county needs? Could we have ended up as a potential -- and I think the Commissioners, you need to consider this -- building an absolute new court facility directly over here, near the other side here by Building 4 and 6? And build a whole proper facility with all the proper elements already built in? In regards to that comment, I will phrase it this way. Back in a previous study, for a remodel of the facility here, we're talking $180 million to remodel this facility, and with moving towards the atrium, that doesn't add any extra facility needed for general administration. But for the courts, an actual facility built for them, that it meets the high level of standards they should have and reduce the cost of security through a proper system, I think, could be extremely beneficial, and I think it would cost less. Unfortunately, right now, from what I saw on the other budget, you are maxed out, supposedly looking at $50 million to remodel this facility, and that won't even touch it for a start. So, you're making a plan without any real plan or knowledge of how much the expenditures would be. Thank you.
Amy, just for future pieces, is the timer not working?
We have the four minutes on the clock, the questions, the answers to the questions, and then we'll keep tracking here the two minutes, and I will give the citizens a 15-minute heads-up.
Okay.
When the timer's up.
Back to you, Rob.
For any other citizens to testify?
We need to check on the Zoom, I think.
Is anybody in the Zoom who would like to testify related to the Superior Court See, and I think we can probably move to the next.
Okay.
So, Commissioners, I'm going to step off to attend a meeting, but Georgia Christian, our budget manager, is here, and if you have follow-up questions that come up, she can get me right back. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
I'm going to stay on for our juvenile court administrators' comments in case there are questions, but after that, I'll drop off. Thank you.
Thank you for attending, Your Honor, and all the judges. Thank you so much for being here this afternoon. Moving then to -- come on -- to juvenile court. Juvenile Court is part of Superior Court. The court administrator is Ted Bryan. The court provides court, probation, and detention services for youth up to age 18. The proposed budget eliminates a position and restores the 2022% budget cut. The total budget for juvenile court, 56 FTEs, $7.2 million in '22, and $7.4 million --
Ramiro, please. Yeah, yeah. Let me --
Got it.
You got it.
Thank you. All right. Still learning technology. I think all of us are. So, total funds for juvenile court, $8.3 million in 2022, $8.5 million in 2023. And who will be speaking to juvenile court budget?
I think I will. Robin, Ted Bryan, Thurston County Juvenile Court.
Great. Go ahead.
Yeah. I want to thank the Board for taking the time. I know it's a lot of work to go through everyone's budget and listen to all the needs and requests. Get tremendous support from the Board of Judges through this, and I did just want to point out that the eliminated position was planned to go to Superior Court, as Superior -- where juvenile court is under the umbrella of Superior Court, and we had worked diligently to find a need in our court for the best operation, the best administration possible. And that's why we eliminated the one position, and we're hoping to direct that to Superior So, I take any questions at this point.
Questions from the Board?
I guess I would have one question, maybe. And I'm not sure this is directed maybe to one of the judges, or maybe Robin, or maybe the county manager. So, I'll just leave it up in the air. I just noticed that administration of justice for both Superior Court, which deals with adults, basically, and juvenile, it's about the same amount of money. And I guess I'm curious why that is, but some of it has to do with detention, and I don't think we have very many people in detention anymore, young people. Do we? So, but the cost is remaining the same? Is that -- so, I'm not sure who gets to -- try to answer that for the citizens out there.
So, I could start, but I would defer to the court. The costs have been going down. The cost of detention have been going down over the past six, seven years. We've seen them slowly step down, the number of FTEs. But I think you get to a certain level where, as long as you have even one person in, you need to cover the 24/7 operation of a detention facility. So, that said, I'm going to ask Ted, or if any of the judges would like to chime in.
I think Ted would be the best person to go first, and then Judge Schaller. I will say that we have many detention alternatives that address youth in need of services. So, Ted, go ahead, please.
Yes, sir. I can say that, over the years, the population has dropped, certainly the last two years through COVID. We have gone to great lengths to develop alternative programming for kids because, as time has gone on, and we've learned so much more about adolescent brain development, the effects of trauma on kids, why kids end up in trouble in the juvenile court system, we have found that it is most effective to have, or more effective -- some kids need to be in detention, but there's also a program element to keep kids out of detention, but under the supervision of the court, but in specific skills training programs. They can participate in school. If they're not in school, they can be in an alternative program here and still return home at night, and that meets their treatment needs. We do spend quite a bit of time getting youth to drug and alcohol services, family education and counseling services, all types of alternatives. We also have electronic home monitoring. The youth development program, you could also look at as sort of a day reporting program that was a term used years ago. But we really try to intervene in kids' and families' lives and provide direct intervention as needed to kids.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you, Judge.
Thank you.
I had a little different flavor of the same question, in a sense, because I was going to ask about the FTE count and trying to clarify for the public that we're talking about. There's a detention versus what, you know, the title's juvenile court, and they're thinking, okay, I see what happens in court. They might think that Corrections, you know, Sheriff's Corrections handles juvenile facility. So, I'm wondering if -- maybe a good question is, out of the 56 FTEs that are identified here, how many of those deal with court and probation, what we see in the courtroom, versus what -- how many of those, what percentage of those are in the detention? the detention piece of your business?
I, I can tell you, I don't have the specific probation numbers in front of me right now. We have 26 full-time staff in the, let's correct that, 28 full-time staff in the detention facility. One's a manager, the, there is a detention probation counselor, a detention counselor in that, in the detention part of the budget. Then four supervisor positions and 22 line staff. The juvenile court budget also includes our dependency guardian ad litem staff, of which there are six, support staff, and then I want to say 12 probation counselors. But Georgia might, might correct me on that.
That gives me a good, a good sense. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, let's go to public comment. I'm assuming Mr. Pettit is making his way up here? Okay.
Well, thank you, juvenile staff, the juvenile courts and the probation and, and also the detention. I was just doing my quick math, and I'm always into math, and I was taking a look, and I'm going, it looks like as though if I was doing the count that was represented on, for year 2020, there was 3,000, what appeared to be 3,000 bed nights for detained people. I mean, I'm, I'm not sure if I'm understanding that correct. And I think that from what I saw there, that aver, if that's the case, then what was really averaging out looks to be about eight people being in detention, I think one per average, per day. And so I, I'm kind of wondering a little bit, I, I realize you have to have 24-hour care for everyone. You have to feed them, you have to make sure that they're safe, and everyone that they're with is safe. But I'm kind of wondering if there's maybe some alternative element, perhaps a different facility could be provided for that type of low number? And then some additional jail facility, should it be necessary, might be available more for, for the Sheriff's Corrections Department rather than building any other facilities? I mean, with eight people, you could have a 10-bedroom house with an office. I mean, I'm just trying to come up with some understanding. What is the type of normal average for youth that are in detention? Having known your department from somebody I knew that was going through it, went through detention, I do have great appreciation to help straighten kids out, get them back perhaps treatment if there's drug issues, other things. So I was going to say, Mr. Edwards always talks about the, the youth is the future. Well, I appreciate you guys doing the hard work of moving them into the future and hopefully not allowing them just to, to dwell into, you know, the other direction of being lifelong incarcerated. So that's all I really have to say. Just what's the average amount of people you're, you're holding? I think you guys are doing a great job.
You mentioned the 2020 numbers. They were just above eight. Through COVID this year, we've had five kids a day in detention proper, just, just over five kids, 5.2, and then 3.8 youth per day in our detention alternative program. Then again, we, we staff accordingly for the building 24/7, but also for numbers of youth in the facility. That's the, that's the short version. Lots of changes in our system, the way we look at things, and trying to, trying to deal with the COVID bounce back once the system's back up and running.
If I may?
Yes.
I just wanted to make sure that it was clear that our youth, just one moment. That our youth development program is also run out of detention. It's not a secure program, but that's part of the way we utilize our detention staff and further work with youth is through our youth development program, in addition, of course, to keeping the detention facility open 24 hours a day. And so I just wanted to make sure that that was clear. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Judge. Go ahead, Mr. Pettit. You have two minutes.
Okay, well, in conclusion, I guess I'm, I'm saying you guys are doing a great job. I, I realize it's hard for us taxpayers out here to sometimes see some benefits of programs, maybe having kids ride horses, which is a program that was previously approved, may still be in existence, I'm not sure. But do appreciate your efforts. You're probably not only helping to direct lives, but perhaps you're even saving some lives for kids that might be deciding that suicide would be an alternative. Usually, bad behavior is a prelude to other emotional problems, and so thank you again for your work.
All right.
On Zoom, just, I don't know if there's, I can't see if there's, maybe that we, we know all the names up there as staff, but.
Yeah, I don't recognize anybody from, from the public, so.
Looks like I can't.
Phone number, and I'm not sure.
Yeah, got a, is there somebody associated with the phone number, with the last four digits of 2448? If you'd like to provide public testimony related to the juvenile court proposed budget? And again, with the phone number, last four digits, 2448?
This is Kevin. No thanks. No comment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner Edwards.
Could somebody maybe just really quickly give us, in a Reader's Digest version, the amount of resources that go towards family court in general? So people don't think all of this is for juvenile detention? Is that a possibility?
Hi, Commissioner Edwards. This is Georgia Christian. Maybe you can give us some more specific information about what you're looking for? Because family court is with Superior Court and in their budget, but if you're asking for maybe juvenile probation costs, we can get that for you?
Yeah, not necessarily. I mean, there's a division of activity there that, I hope we don't go away from this, thinking that five incarcerated a day ends up costing $8 million. That's what I was trying to get away from.
Commissioner, what you, what you're looking for is the split on, out of there, $8.3 million. How much is associated with detention and their programs versus how much is related to the actual court proceedings?
That's, yeah, that was.
Is, is that?
There must be some kind of a division of normal activities that.
Well, I, I kind of asked that on an FTE basis.
Yeah.
And the answer was exactly 50/50.
Sounds like if you divide it out, that's.
50% is dealing with court and probation and, and dependency and jails, and then 50% was FTEs for the, for the detention.
Okay, so that's probably been covered.
I don't know if that, is that?
Oh, I, I think that probably covers it. Just something to think about in the future.
We'll work with our budget manager and give you some follow-up, simple breakdown. I appreciate that question.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, so moving on. Thank you again to all of the judges and the administrators of the court for coming this afternoon. I'm going to share again, and we're going to move to the clerk's office. Our elected clerk, Linda Meyer-Enlow, is with us on Zoom this afternoon. The clerk's office records Superior Court proceedings, maintains the court's records, collects fines, fees, and other activities directly related to Superior Court. In this budget, the board has extended funding of positions that are working on scanning records. This is because the clerk is responsible for maintaining historic documents for the courts. The budget transfers a facilitator position to the general fund and closes the Family Court Services Fund. That is because this service is essential to the public, and the Family Court Services Fund was not funding itself. So in this way, the revenue will go to the general fund and will be able to continue those services. It eliminates a position in the Legal Financial Obligations Fund, modifies positions to fully fund judicial accounting specialist and legal records coordinator positions, and adds a position to support the Ninth Judge. The FTEs in the clerk's office are 47.5. General fund is $8.8 million in 2022 and $7.1 million. It is higher in '22 due to Blake. And total funds, $9 million in '22, 7.4 in '23. And I would invite our clerk to make any comments as she may choose.
Well, I would, first off, I want to thank the board for considering all of our requests, and I do appreciate the hard work that you put into determining what is best for the citizens of Thurston County. I don't have anything else to add, but welcome any questions that you may have for me. Thank you.
Looking for the clerk before we go to comment? Nope. Okay, oh, sir. We got Mr. Pettit here.
Since there's a lack of opportunity for the public to come to meetings like this, I, I want to emphasize that your department seems to run exceedingly well, and your staff seems to be way going out of their way to try to help people. So thank you very much. I won't have any follow-up.
Thank you.
I don't see anyone else.
Let me, let me ask the phone number again.
Kevin?
Kevin, with the phone number 2448, would you like to provide public testimony related to the proposed budget for the clerk's office?
No thanks, and probably not for most other topics either.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Right, then we will move on. Possibly the longest part of the hearing will be just me trying to share and unshare my screen. Next, we have District Court. District Court has three elected judges, and the court administrator is Frankie Peters. District Court hears misdemeanor, traffic, small, and civil claims cases, and operates the mental health and veterans courts. The budget for District Court increases pro, judge pro temp funding, adds treatment sales tax funded care coordinator for the mental health and veterans court, adds court interpreter coordinator to serve both district and Superior Courts, and provides funding for court supplies and their operating lease. The FTEs in District Court are 35.75. General fund is 4.3 million in each year. Total funds, 4.9 million in '22, 5.2 million in '23. And I would ask, who is here? It's Judge Buckley. Thank you for being here, Your Honor, and I'll turn it over to you.
Real quick, Judge Buckley, Robin, can I just clarify one thing? When you're going through these bullets on the PowerPoint, those are kind of like new elements, correct?
These are all new things that the board has added to the budget.
In there.
Oh heavens, no. The, the base is quite, quite extensive.
These are kind of the highlights of the new elements that were added by the preliminary.
This budget, yes.
Okay. Go ahead, Judge Buckley. Good afternoon.
Commissioner Manzer, good afternoon. Commissioner Edwards, Commissioner Mejia, good afternoon, and I'll echo what everybody else has said. Thank, thank you to the board for the hard work on this. You know, it's hard enough to do a budget in normal years, and yet you all have had to also weigh the pandemic and the spinoffs from that. So thank you very much for the work that you've done and for the help you provided our office in preparing a budget. I wanted to comment on a couple of things. I wanted to highlight a request we had made, which has general or preliminary approval, and that was for the court interpreter coordinator. This is a joint position between District Court and Superior Court. It would serve both courts. It would have one FTE added, somebody who is a court certified interpreter in the obvious language would be Spanish. And that person would provide direct interpreting services for both courts, as well as coordinate the arrangement for the attendance of other interpreters. We are love, learning in the time of Zoom that we have access to interpreters through Zoom. It's been extraordinarily helpful. Just, it becomes a coordination issue. Having one person do that would be really advantageous for both courts. Both courts, by the way, have been accepted into the administrative office of the court's interpreter reimbursement program, which is a brand-new program. I don't believe very many courts are currently accepted into participation in that program. And the coordinator position would assist us in efforts to be more effective in meeting the needs of that program, which will allow for reimbursement of costs from the state. I can't put a number on what that would be now, but having this position would allow us to more fully take advantage of our participation in the court interpreter reimbursement program from AOC. I do appreciate the increased funding for, from the ARPA funds that would allow us to, for the next two years, get a baseline in having the county fund the use of technology devices to monitor those criminal defendants who have alcohol-related issues. And I'm specifically speaking about what we call transdermal alcohol monitoring devices, sometimes known by the trade name SCRAM device. Frequently, when ordering that as an alternative to incarceration, people say, well, I can't afford the $15 a day that it costs, and that's quite expensive for, you know, a lot of our folks, 85% of whom have so few resources of income that they get court-appointed counsel. So sometimes we don't have the ability to let them out of jail on this technology monitoring. Having these, this funding will allow us to let more folks out of jail, yet monitor them on a 24/7 basis for any potential alcohol consumption, which gives us a lot of information. And we appreciate the county being willing to allow us to start this. We've been proposing this idea for a number of years and really happy to see that it's gotten preliminary approval to get started now. And also appreciate the treatment sales tax appropriation for a mental health and veterans court care coordinator. That position is greatly needed. Be happy to answer any questions.
No questions.
No questions from the board? Mr. Pettit?
Good afternoon, Judge Buckley. I remember having some chats with you before, and I, one of the particular things which District Court, of course, you're running a budget of where you're at. And I can certainly understand having any type of tools and mechanisms to help your job out is, is highly valued. It probably saves a lot more money than what it really costs. There is an ongoing issue about your facilities. I don't think you've had any major leaks hitting on the floor over there in that building of recent time, but it, it appears that unless there's some facilities I'm unaware of, that your current facilities are minimal at best. And so the questions would come is, do you actually need to be located in that location, or could you have a different location that you could do your work? I mean, many counties have district courts located throughout various spots. Can it be done in a, in a different way that perhaps at one time I even suggested creating a district court location over at the family court location with a, a real facility built for your purposes? So I'm just wondering, are your current facilities adequate? And second part to that is, is that while there's suggestions of making changes around here on this site. here on this site, are we putting lipstick on a pig? And are we better off to go ahead and build a proper facility for the courts that would actually serve the purpose and maybe use the, I hate to call it the pig, but use the pig for other administrative purposes and other purposes? Because I'm concerned, if I understood previous plans, they would move the sheriff's office out and there is no plan as to what to really do with them and just move them out of here. So, what would be your thoughts about different facilities if that was available? That's my question. And you're doing a good job. Thank you.
I'm glad you threw that in, John. You were going to leave me out and I was going to feel bad about that. So, yeah, thank you for the question. You and I have spoken about this a lot. And the bond measure that was to be on the ballot for a new courthouse obviously was taken off because of the situation that the county was facing with the pandemic. And it was an appropriate response by the county to say, you know, we have more important things like that, is save the lives of our community members and the folks who work for the county and focus on that. So, that made a lot of sense. But that didn't mean that the problems that engendered the ballot proposition in the first place have gone away. They have not. In fact, each day that goes by, this facility ages more and more. And this facility is worse than it was two years ago when you stopped having to hear me talk all the time about how bad it was. So, we will continue to need a new facility. Now, one of the things we've learned in the last two years is that perhaps our vision of what that facility was can change. Because in district court, we do a lot of hearings now remotely. There are times where the clerk and I are the only ones in the courtroom and other people are zooming in, just like for this commission hearing today. So, we've learned a lot about our ability to reach out and let our community members interact with us in a way that means that they don't have to come to the courthouse. And that's a, that's a real benefit. We will continue doing that pandemic or non, no pandemic. But it doesn't mean our need for an updated facility go away. One of the things we, John also pointed out earlier, and was large space that the county said the least to allow superior court and district court to conduct jury trials. We need a large space because distancing is important to allow us to conduct jury trials where you have a number of people in one room. And, you know, I think we can all have some degree of confidence that this isn't the last pandemic we will see. You know, I'm just of the mind that it's, this may be something we should just, you know, get prepared for and be ready for so that we don't have to wait a year-plus before we restart jury trials in the future. We can, you know, seamlessly move. So, a design would also contemplate having courtrooms big enough to have in that type of situation. So, the need hasn't gone away. And specifically as to district court, John, you pointed out that we have significant space needs. You know, the original space needs estimate showed that district court had about 50% of the space it needed at the time that estimate was done. And nothing has changed in our space. And our work has continued to go up, particularly as we try to improve our technology approach and handling our work. So, the need is there. You had mentioned in your response or your question and comment to Judge Wilson, you know, build one, a new courthouse right here on this spot. And, you know, I'm not going to relitigate that whole issue. I would just point out that the issues I see up here are, one, a lack of parking, and then, two, ingress and egress limitations, just up and down courthouse ill and off 101. That isn't sufficient, in my mind, for having appropriate access to a courthouse that would allow emergency services and public access in that way. I hope that addressed the general question asked.
Yes. My last two minutes, and I'll try to bring it. There's a lot of integrity in the court systems, in the clerks, and all of that area. And yes, the facilities are pretty atrocious, comparatively speaking. They're way, way under the needs. Now, I know that there's thoughts about trying to convert this facility into some type of law and justice center. But once again, it doesn't fix the, the needs perhaps for location or other elements. It just, it puts some lipstick on the pig. If we're going to do something, we should do it right. Or we should find a plan and make a plan that does work right with an adequate amount of funding behind it. A tax, yes, people will pay taxes for things they value and believe are needed. So, I thank you, Judge. I thank all of the judges there that, that work in the cave over there. And hopefully, things can be resolved. Yes, there's a parking issue here. Big parking issue. That's why I wanted to move you over to the other court, get you out of this parking. And, you know, as a particular department, the district court actually uses more parking than any other particular department because of the number of people. Of course, that was pre-zooming in for court. But I'd encourage you to look at maybe better facilities. And better facilities doesn't include just putting some pain on one and calling it good. Thank you.
I don't think we have anybody in Zoom.
Yep.
Sir.
Okay. Thank you so much, Your Honor. And I see Frankie here, too. Thanks for being with us this afternoon.
Thank you.
We are going to move on to the prosecuting attorney's office. Prosecutor John Toonheim is the lead. And the core services provided by the prosecuting attorney is criminal prosecution services. They provide civil legal advice for county offices and crime victim services. This budget adds to the prosecutor's budget for public records and business applications technology positions. It matches the victim crime advocate position from grant-funded to the Blake project. Expenditures are moved from the general fund and treatment sales tax so that they are allocated appropriately. And this budget also funds additional rent expenses in off-site locations. The prosecutor's office has 81.75 FTEs. General fund funding is 10.8 million in '22 and 11.1 million in '23. Total budget is 12.1 million in '22, 12.4 million in '23. Prosecutor Toonheim is with us this afternoon, and I will turn it over to him.
Okay. Thank you, Robin. I appreciate it. And I'll add my thanks to the board for your efforts in weighing all of the budget options and for your approval of some of our funding requests that are, that were very important to us. I'll just take a couple of minutes to do a high-level overview of what our budget was formed around and our priorities so that the community understands what we were looking at. And then I'm happy to answer the questions. First and foremost, our most significant challenge right now is the capacity in our criminal division, and particularly the capacity to deal with the backlog. One of our requests that we had put in was for a number of FTEs to be added to our criminal division. But that was, of course, before we knew whether the Recovery Act money could be used for a backlog reduction. And so, those, that request was moved over into the discussion around the, what's called the ARPA funding. And I agree, that's a, that's an appropriate place for the, for that discussion. And we are continuing that proposal in that format. So, we're not looking at that proposal in this, in the general fund. There was a couple of other, well, I will also want to, I do want to just note for the community that one of the requests that we made in that, in that proposal, in terms of the criminal division capacity, was for an investigator. And historically, my office has not had an investigator in the history of the office. But it's actually pretty common now for prosecutors' offices, when they get to a certain size and a certain caseload, to employ investigators to tell, take some of that burden away from law enforcement and not have to constantly rely on law enforcement to do follow-up work and track down witnesses and serve subpoenas and, and things like that. And so, that is another piece that is going forward in the ARPA discussion. And I just want people to know that we are piloting that as a part of this, as a part of that backlog effort. And I will be reporting back on the progress and the success of that as we get down the road. We added, or just transferred to a new case management system about two months ago. It's a substantially better, more robust, more powerful case management system. And we did that along with the public defender's office, who also changed to the same system. So, we have a prosecutor side of that system and a defender side of that system. It's known as e-prosecutor, e-defender appropriately. This system is, has so many features and tools available to it. It's going to be an ongoing process to continue to build it out and to adapt it to what we need. And so, we asked for, and you approved, a business application specialist, which is a position that will be dedicated to maintaining our case management system and improving our workflows and so forth contained in that. We are completely fileless, paperless files now in, in the office as a result of that. We do not have any paper files any longer. And so, all of our case management is happening electronically now through that e-prosecutor. The position that you authorized is going to help continue us to let, to let us leverage that the best that we can. We also asked for and received a, an additional FTE towards our public records unit. Public records, I think, across the entire county continues to increase at a fairly substantial pace, including our office. And so, we simply needed to add some more capacity to that public records unit to try to better serve the offices that we provide assistance to and also to just handle our own public records requests. Finally, I wanted to say that there was one request in our budget that we've asked for reconsideration on, and that is for a victim advocate. And I think part of this was that I wasn't very clear when we were in our budget briefing about what exactly had happened in our victim advocate program. When Robin was introducing our office, she noted that the budget shifts a victim advocate from a grant to Blake. The grant was for a general fund, or a general felony advocate funded out of the Crime Victim Advocacy Network, which funds advocacy for general felonies, meaning those that are not focused on sexual assault or domestic violence. That grant was reduced, and it wasn't voluntarily. It was just, it was a reduction of funding from the state to our office at a reduction of one full-time equivalent. At the same time, we were granted an additional advocate to assist with the Blake caseload, which is very specific to a certain caseload. And I know that you know what that is about. It's all the resentencings that are being done on Blake-affected cases. And so, what we did is we took the advocate that had been in general felony and moved her to begin working in the Blake cases. That being said, we are still short now in advocate in general felony. And so, we were actually reduced, the net reduction was a victim advocate serving general felony cases. Our concern is, as we start to dig in and address the backlog, that the need for advocacy services will, you know, remain the same, if not increase. And so, and our victim advocate fund was not able to absorb that loss. It does not have enough revenue to support that loss or absorb the loss. And so, we are asking the board to consider restoring that advocate with general fund. It would be the only advocate funded in our office from general fund. Everything else in our victim advocacy program is funded either through grant, money received from the state, or through the Crime Victim Penalty Assessment Fund that we have in the county. And so, that's a very high-level overview of our budget requests. Again, I appreciate the board's efforts. And I appreciate the board being willing to open up the possibility of using Recovery Act money to help us address this rather dramatic backlog that we're facing.
No, sir.
I do have a question. So, prosecutor, are you asking us to reconsider?
Yes, yes, there was a, yes, there was a memo or an email put out asking for requests for reconsideration, and we submitted one. I think that's on your agenda coming up in the week.
Yeah.
To take another look at. And that, but I, I wanted to give you the background today so that you had that going into your conversations.
Right. John, that is part of your, the packet you have.
I'm sorry, you're looking for information on this packet? No. We submitted an email with all the asks for reconsideration yesterday.
Okay.
It should be sitting in your email inbox.
Right.
Commissioner Edwards.
Sent it on Friday.
Yep.
You should have that.
I have a question, John. The, given that the Blake cases are older cases and they're drug possession cases, what is the victim's advocate role in those, in those, in that caseload? Just, could you spell that out for me?
Sure. And I appreciate the question because I'm sure the community is asking the same thing. There's a, there's two different pieces to this Blake caseload that's important to, to understand. One is the, the drug cases themselves, the, the possession of controlled substance cases that are simply going through a process of being vacated. But the, the other body of work, which is actually a bigger body of work, is resentencing people, anybody who was convicted and sentenced for any crime, where one of the crimes in their criminal history score was a prior possession, is entitled to be resentenced. And so, there would, there is, for instance, there are violent crime cases that are being resentenced because the person had a possession conviction in their criminal history. In those cases, the victim has an absolute right to be heard at sentencing. And it's our responsibility then to try to track down that victim, communicate what's happening, and get their input or make sure they have the opportunity to appear and be heard at the sentencing hearing.
Perfect. Thank you. Commissioner Edwards?
No, I'm good.
Okay. You're good, sir. All right. Then let's, so Mr. Pettit's up for some comment, questions?
Well, I do have some questions for you, prosecuting attorney Toonheim. And I appreciate the fact that you seek to have an additional victim advocate. You know, sometimes, the people, the public, we're the ones that start feeling like we're the victims because everybody else, they're all getting talked to, we're just kind of left out. Which is partly what also leads me to another part that you mentioned, the need for a public records for more capacity. I find, I end up making a number of public records requests, which I know are directed through your office because, well, appears files seem to get hidden away. They aren't even posted, you know, where a person can get to it. I don't know why they don't make things available. We live in a day and age where you should be able to hit a search engine and pop up something instantly. I think City of Olympia, they have a system integrated that other requests that were made are available for people to look at so they have an opportunity to get the same information that you might be asking for, but it's already been asked for by someone else. So, I do believe that there's probably some additional need there. The other comment I'm going to make is I, I have a little disagreement with you in terms of FTEs through the Recovery Act and an investigator. I don't think you should wait for the Recovery Act to be a basis for deciding whether or not there's a need for the public. You know, the concept that we have a need, and if it could improve your department and take some weight off of the sheriff's department by having an investigator, it would seem to be prudent to move forward with that because it serves all departments, plus it, it's tree- because it serves all departments, plus it streamlines the process. So I appreciate your, your long process of laying this out and everything. I, so those would be the things is, if you have other things, do you think that you should only do things based upon some recovery money or federal money, or are these needs that should be dealt with anyway? So there's your, your basic question. Another thing has to do with your current facilities. Currently, as I have seen, you have facilities that are split up in multiple locations. And because you have multiple locations, sometimes they have to deliver paperwork to multiple locations. And if the county was to reassess how they would move forward in the future and perhaps build a, a true courthouse facility with adequate size for the courts and another story or two for the prosecutor's office, would that be more advantageous and perhaps streamlined than having to have multiple buildings with multiple spots that require entry and, and people to be watched for everyone walking in and out of every building, the security elements? Would you be inclined to suggest we could go towards something better than just, as I mentioned before, putting lipstick on a pig and actually build something that would be correct and adequate for your true needs? Those are my questions for you.
I appreciate those questions, and I will say that the request for additional capacity in the Criminal Division actually wasn't predicated on the use of Recovery Act funds. And that's what I was trying to say at the beginning and perhaps didn't say very well, and that is, that was actually a request that we put in initially as a general fund budget addition. But the reality is the additional capacity that's needed is primarily to be focused on addressing the backlog right now, which is substantial. Every lawyer in my, every Criminal Division lawyer in my office has a full caseload, and they are keeping up with the cases that are being processed through, which right now, because of the COVID priorities, are mostly the higher priority cases. But we have this backlog of other cases. And because this is focused on the backlog and Recovery Act money is specifically authorized under the federal guidelines to address court backlogs, I think there was a decision made that this, this capacity should at least initially be funded through the Recovery Act, which I don't disagree with. I think that is a perfectly acceptable source of funding for that. As we resolve the backlog, I, I would anticipate coming back to the board in probably two years after we've made headway on the backlog with a report on where we're at and what our long-term needs might be going forward in the next budget cycle. But I think the Recovery Act money was an appropriate, an appropriate resource to look at in terms of funding the capacity that we need to address the backlog. And so that's, that's the reason I think it was shifted to that, to that funding source and not general fund. On the space issue, we are, we're scattered all over the place. That's my, maybe a little of an exaggeration, but some of that is by choice and some of it is not by choice. We have very limited capacity at the main courthouse, and that primarily now just houses our general fund or our general felony criminal unit. Our domestic violence unit is actually located, incorporated into the Family Justice Center in Olympia, and that's by choice. That's, that's because that's a co-located victim service center for victims and survivors of domestic violence. We have our special victims unit, which is located at the Monarch Children's Advocacy Center. That is also by choice for the very same reason. So the issue would be bringing together our, our General Felony Division, misdemeanor, civil, and perhaps our family support into one place. That is my understanding of the goal. And I'm, I'm, you know, I'm open to all different strategies to achieve that goal, including proposals around the remodeling of the, of the current structure or even the construction of a new courthouse, which I supported back when it was in development. Either way, for me, the, the goal is the goal, and that is to bring together as many of the different departments that I can bring together that aren't by, that aren't separated by choice.
Yep, go ahead, Mr. Pettit, two minutes.
Yeah, two minutes. Well, this is more of an opportunity to make comment to you, the board, here. I want to thank you, Mr. Toonheim. I, I appreciate the difficult position, but I guess what I, I want to emphasize is it was by choice that you've decided to make a two-year biennial budget. That choice has also consequences. It means you don't get to just, it's not like I'm changing my mind. We're going to change the budget next week. And when I look at the numbers that are here, I don't see the numbers put in a way that's going to deal with inflationary needs. I, I could see some tremendous issues coming up. Something even like tomorrow could be a day of, or a day after tomorrow could be a day of unrest. We're going to be having a whole group of people down here at the end of Capitol Lake that are going to be driven away from that location, and they're going to find places to be. Some of them are going to be right out here into the county, and we're going to have a prosecutor that's going to suddenly be faced, a sheriff's department, a prosecutor, that suddenly can be burdened with trying to find solutions. If I had one other part, which I'll throw in for my little short time here for additional comment, you know, the prosecutor's office, I do believe, is intricate in helping assist people getting into treatment programs. And I think that that's a real key to be able to work with different ways to get people there. But there's no question, we have some very significant mental illness and treatment programs that are needed. And I'm going to encourage you to think in terms of being supportive to any program that's going to help get people where they need to get the help from. Thank you.
Okay.
There is a.
Yes.
Is there one last number there in the corner? Next to Kevin Passenger?
Yeah, I recognize a new name, Mr. Kevin Passenger.
That was the Kevin that we heard from before.
Oh, is that, okay. So, and the same phone number, 2448?
Oh, okay, it's the same.
Oh, I don't think I have any, anybody on Zoom.
Very good.
All right. So then we will move on to the sheriff. Sheriff Snaza, thank you for being with us this afternoon. The sheriff's office provides emergency response, law enforcement in the incorporated county, and so much more. That's a very simple statement for everything maybe. This budget includes funding for the purchase of body and car cameras and the related staffing for the anticipated public records requests that go with that. It restores funding for two sheriff deputies and adds an additional deputy position. It provides additional funding for overtime and funds the pay increases for certain support staff based on market study results. This budget also includes funding for software licenses for patrol deputies and increases funding for an interagency agreement between Public Works and the Roads and Transportation Division of the Sheriff's Office. There are 124.49, almost 124.5 FTEs in the sheriff's law enforcement budget and 24.7 million, slightly less, in 2022 and 2023. Total funding for the sheriff's office, $25.3 million in '22, $24.4 million in 2023. And sheriff, I invite you to speak if you'd like to. And you'd like to do them both at once? That's fine.
Looks great, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Okay, in corrections, the Corrections operates adult corrections facility and alternative programs that support the successful reintegration into our community. The items of additional funding in the Corrections budget are to restore funding for two correctional deputies. And the end date, we have three positions in Corrections that support operations at our Chandler Court off-court facility. Those positions had end dates that have been extended in this budget using Recovery Act funding. There are shifts in funding from the general fund to the detention facility sales tax fund. That, there was additional capacity in the detention facilities fund. So the board was able to shift those costs at no detriment to the Corrections operation, and that created capacity in the general fund for other things, including increasing funding of overtime and funding for attending the Corrections Academy, increasing wages for certain support staff based on market studies, providing funding to add tasers and body scanner to the ERNR fund, and funding for increasing the cost of contracted services. The FTEs in Corrections are 135.74 FTEs. General fund is 18.1 million in '22, 19.1 million in '23. And total funding in Corrections, because they do have quite a bit of funding from detention facilities tax and treatment sales tax, is 24.2 million in '22 and 25.3 million in '23. So both of those. Thank you, Sheriff Snaza.
First off, I want to say thank you for allowing me to be up here. Just a little bit of history is that I can remember when we would all be up here and talking about our budgets, all the electeds and the department directors, and you would see a whole bunch of people in the back wanting to give comment. And it, at times, it seemed very contentious based on people's strong opinions about how money is spent in county government as a whole, not just towards any particular office or department. And what I really do want to say is that this has probably been the most, for me, the, the best year of how the sheriff's office has been able to interact, not only with the county commission, but with the county manager and the assistant county manager on request and needs. And obviously, we all want a lot of things, and we have to be realistic about what our real needs are and what is important in how we serve our community. And what was really great is that for the sheriff's office, I felt that we were more heard. And for that, I want to say, Robin, thank you for all the patience that you've had with me, not only over the years, but especially this year. Because of COVID, and because of that, we've all had some really not good experiences, to be very honest with you, as far as now almost all the department heads and electeds are via Zoom, and they're not here in person to really kind of give how they really feel because of all the atmosphere that happens when you're in a room together and we're all talking about money and budgets. I do want to say that I'm very grateful that we at least have two individuals here that are willing to come and give public comment, and at least maybe one person on public comment, because a long time ago, it used to be the media was here because they wanted to hear what the county was going to do with all the office and departments and the funding crisis and issues that they were facing. So for that, I'm sorry that, that it's not being able to make, made out to what it really is because what all of you are going through this year is amazing feat, and I really appreciate the time and energy that all of you have spent going through the budget process. The one, the hardest part that we're seeing right now in the sheriff's office is crime is up, and we're seeing more violent crime than we've ever seen in Thurston County. And a lot of it, whether it has to do with the new laws that have been imposed on us in the middle of, of June, or if it's what COVID is doing to our community. But we are definitely seeing a huge spike increase in our violent crime. And also how we deal with crime, how we work with individuals and working with the mental health community and designated crisis responders. Law enforcement has changed. And so one of the, the big points I would like to give out is, thank you for looking at and hopefully approving the, the body cameras and in-car cameras for the vehicles. That is a huge change in law enforcement in Thurston County, across the state. And the reason why I say it is because most people aren't really, if you're looking at whether you're in favor of it or not, and the way I look at it is, is a safety feature for the men and women in law enforcement. It protects them because now the new laws of how they can be charged with crimes as well. And we're, we're going to go through this, we're going to have some rough patches, but I just want to say thank you for looking at our budget and really making some tough decisions that not only affect Thurston County Sheriff's Office, but all the other offices and departments that have already spoken and who are going to even speak after me and tomorrow. So thank you for putting all that time and energy in to what I feel is, is very appropriate. Does it make the sheriff's office with additional staffing? Does it put us any higher on the list? No, we're still going to be 39 out of 39 counties. But what I do want to say is thank you for considering to put us, get us those individual bodies that we desperately need. As for Corrections, whether you've, you've known about it, whether I've spoken about it or not, the Corrections Academy is 10 weeks long now. We've never had it like that before, so it costs more money to send our people to the academy. But the most important part about the training that they are receiving, both in Corrections and on the law enforcement, is bias-based police training, crisis intervention training, and de-escalation training. Those are what really is going to benefit our community and the men and women that serve in law enforcement and in Corrections. So I just want to say thank you for all the efforts that you have all made and that I really am looking forward to hopefully a great two years and that, but our, our wish for our New Year's is that we won't have COVID anymore. So anyway, thank you very much.
Any questions from the board before we go to? Nope, I mean, all right, go ahead.
I, I don't have a question. You, you mentioned that you're still 39 out of 39 counties in the state of Washington in number of officers per thousand population served. Is that what you were referring to?
Yes, sir, it's, even with, if the board approves the, the three additional bodies, we will still be a 5.56. But when Robin was reading off the numbers, like in Corrections, there's seven-fourth of a person and four-ninths of a person. I don't know how we do that, but it's, that's the interesting math equation that we put together on that. But yes, sir, we'll be about 5.56 deputies per thousand. Just to let you all know, though, every law enforcement office in, in this county is down. Olympia is down 10, Lacey's down 10, 10 or 11, and I know Tumwater is down several as well. So we are all down law enforcement. I was only able to use that number of deputies that we have, and if approved, the three additional would still keep us at 39th.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Pettit?
Well, there's probably mostly comment here, which will be going to you, the commissioners, maybe a question will pop up. And I want to point out something. I'm not packing. I don't have to carry a gun with me. The reason I don't have to feel like I need to carry protection is because I have a sheriff's department that's out there to help protect us. When you're in the county, you're out, you're out there. Some people are way out there. I mean, I even know one commissioner that's crazy enough to live out it, like Lawrence. But you know, when you have an emergency call, and that equates a certain amount of time for them to get there. And when you're number 39 out of 39 for having the least number of officers, that's not something to be proud of. I mean, you worry about liability all the time. Do you have liability for not having enough staff in order to actually be there to make those emergency calls? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you probably wouldn't be dead now had you actually had someone that showed up there 15 minutes earlier, but we were too busy spread all over the county. The sheriff's department works 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, which means they have a lot of territory to cover. You talk about, oh gee, they have 125 employees. Well, that includes administrative staff, that includes detectives that aren't necessarily out on the road, you have very limited. So, I guess one of the questions I will ask the sheriff to put is, how many typical deputies on the road do you have per shift? And how do you decide where you're putting them at? Now, you're going to be running into another big problem. We already know it's out there. I have neighbors notifying me on text, hey, there's this person that stole a bicycle, and they're heading down Rich Road. Well, I'm a pretty mild person, I'm not going to go shoot them. I might try to stop them, but I'm not going to be shooting them. You're building a case for not being prepared for an onslaught of crime that's continuing to build. Now, as far as the cameras, I can't think of something that's more necessary in a time than when you have litigation of he said, she said on everything. You ready? Sometimes a deputy might make a mistake, but I'll guarantee you, the criminal's going to claim that every time they made a mistake, it provides a realm of a record that's available to show what happened. And it's hard to say what happened when you have the emotions of everything flying every direction. That's just, that should be as much of a mandatory piece of equipment as their gun. And yes, we need guns with them, too. I think that we've been well-served, so just for a couple questions before I maybe do a little follow-up. How many deputies on the road out there protecting that approximately 150,000 people that are in the unincorporated, not that you don't deal with inside the city, but how many deputies do you have on the road? And how many, if you were going to be, let's say, number 15, or wait, number 20 on the list for counties, what type of ratio would we have, and how many more deputies would we need to get there?
So, right now, it's close to 3 o'clock, or maybe a little after. So, right now, I have eight, you okay? Are you going to come up here and talk? Okay, I just, okay, yeah. Anyway, right now, I have eight deputies on the road and a supervisor. And in the morning, I have seven, and in the evening, I have seven and a supervisor. So, to be very frank with you, if we're doing per thousand and you're doing deputies per thousand, it would be a large number of individuals. And to be very frank with you, I would not ask for that many deputies in a budget cycle, biennium or annual. And the reason is, is because I wouldn't have the staffing to go through the hiring process, nor would we be able to accommodate the potential candidates into an academy class, because there's usually at least a three-to-four month waiting list to even get to go to the academy. So, we're trying to be very fiscally responsible when we do hire somebody, that we get them an academy date, and then we can hire them a few weeks prior to them starting the academy, so that we're not spending taxpayer dollars on an individual that isn't going to go to the academy for a long amount of time. So, we try to make sure that we have academy classes available for the individuals that we do hire. So, I would say that if you did the math and you said that there's over 300,000 citizens in Thurston County, and we serve probably about 160-plus thousand people in unincorporated Thurston County, then I saw you with your calculator, you'd be able to do the math per thousand. So, anyway, that's where we're at. Thank you.
To conclude, I will give my two minutes here, which is, it comes down to this simple. Number one priority of government is to provide a safe and healthy environment for the citizens. You don't have a safe environment if you don't have people available to be there, to come in our emergency, to come when we don't expect it. When Suzie runs into the ditch because she had an accident, who shows up? Who are the people that are having, but gee, we're going to have like maybe seven or eight potential across this vast hundreds of miles of area. Is that really acceptable? And if you don't have the funding at this time, maybe what you need to think about is finding another way to seek additional funding, maybe a levy lift in order to provide for services. Because right now, the way it's working, we take money out of the road department, so our roads go downhill in order to provide more money to the sheriff's department, to provide it to the general fund. Just because we're short on money doesn't mean we don't need to look at a different source to fix it. You're not fixing it just by shifting things around. I'm going to encourage you, take care of our people. They're the ones that are helping take care of us. So, I ask you to support all of the requests, up it even, up the ante even. Let's get a few more deputies on the road. Thank you.
My name is Knewleyman. I'm a deputy with Thurston County Sheriff's Office, and I'm also the president of the Deputy Sheriff Association, which I'm speaking on behalf of today. Much like everybody else has echoed here, thank you for all the work that you guys have done for the budget workup. I feel bad for the staff that had to carry those big binders in, in and out of your meetings all week, during that week, and I hope you put them on your Christmas list, because carrying those things, I'm sure, was pretty heavy. The Sheriff's Association wants to say that we support the budget you guys have amended, or have developed. We stand in support with our sheriff in regards to what he's asking for. However, we do believe that also he's limited on what he can ask for. I know our sheriff would probably ask for a lot more to fix every issue that we have, and has the Deputy Sheriff Association back to the end of the date. But realistically, we can't do that, and realistically, the Deputy Sheriff Association can't expect the county commissioners to do that either, based fiscally off what is in front of them. If you guys could fix all of our issues, I know you guys would. What I want to echo is a lot of the things that actually Mr. Pettit talked about, and I'm in agreement with him on a lot of the things that he said, some things that our sheriff said. The past two years in law enforcement has been very cumbersome, and our deputies have done an amazing job in succeeding and overcoming the necessary changes that needed to be made in order to continue providing law enforcement service to the county as effectively and efficiently as we have. I think we have done an extremely tremendous job in providing that service to our county, but it didn't come without some kind of sacrifice. And our deputies are extremely exhausted. They are frustrated. The last two years between all of the issues with the Black Lives Matter movement, the protests, COVID, the legislative changes, I mean, we're in the middle of contract negotiations, and having to deal with all these emotions and still have to go out and do the job and not be affected by those and allow those external things to impact these services that we provide, it takes a toll on that deputy. I don't know what the right answer is to fix those things. However, the fix is, we would love to see more deputies on the road. You guys can't provide that. So what can we do to help bring the morale up of our department and show those deputies that have come out every day and night and put their lives on the line, that their sacrifice is valued? And I think that's kind of where we're coming to in our association. I guess I would ask the county commissioners, what is your guys' plan moving forward to show the deputies, to show the Deputy Sheriff Association that they're valued, that they're respected, and that they're wanted here? Because there's a lot of opportunities right now to go to other departments and other agencies in this state and outside of this state that are providing a larger financial incentive for them to go. And I think when our sheriff presented last time his priorities for the budget, I don't want him to speak, but I believe he said that he hired 14 deputies since the first of the year. That doesn't mean that we've added 14 more FTE positions, it means we've just filled 14 spots that have already been provided that have been vacated. So how do we prevent that from continuing on into the future and retain the people that we've invested into?
You. Sure. Any questions that you wanted the sheriff to answer? Or you just want to make comment?
I guess the question is, moving forward, how do we retain the people that we have already invested into, and what are we going to do to show those deputies that we're moving forward, we're trying to add more positions to the road outside of just this budget?
So, was that a question for the sheriff?
It was a question for the commissioners.
I believe if this relate to the budget proposal for the sheriff's corrections as well as the patrol, so if you have a question for the sheriff, he's available to answer.
Okay. Then I misunderstood the original instructions that I could ask questions to the elected and the panel, so I apologize. I'll retract that question from the commissioner.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Not a problem. Very good point, sir. Okay, good.
I don't have anybody on Zoom, but if I miss somebody, please come up.
I see, Hendrix.
Would like to ask a question?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Please introduce your name, where you reside in the county, you have four minutes, sir.
My name is Kevin Pestinger. I live in Lacey, Washington. So, my question is for the sheriff. I saw a previous version of a budget request from over a month ago that included a line item for something along the lines of noise suppressor. Could you talk about what that is more specifically? Is it still in the budget? Was it removed? Or what's the status of that, and what's your need for that?
That is actually a really good question, because it was part of the suppressors for our firearms, actually our rifles, and the request was, is to be able to put it on our emergency repair and replacement, so that at the end of their expiration or their usefulness, that we would be able to have funding to purchase new ones. But mostly, it was for law enforcement and hearing protection side of that.
I believe that the board.
May I ask a follow-up?
Sure.
Robin, hold on.
So, that's your thing for use in the field or for use in training or for other purposes?
Mr. Pettit, sorry. We got four minutes for you, and I'll let you add on to what you said before, and then the sheriff will respond to all of that, and then I think Robin might have some input into what your question was. But whatever questions you have, just kind of lay them out, and then we'll give the sheriff another chance to respond.
Thank you.
Go ahead, you can ask your follow-up.
So, my follow-up was, are those for use in the field, for in training, or all of the above?
Sir, is that, do you have any additional questions? What I'm trying to do is give you the opportunity to ask all the questions related to the sheriff's budget, and then the sheriff is available to follow up on all the questions that you may have.
That's all my questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Actually, it is for both, both in training and in the field as well. And Robin, you had something to add to that?
I was just going to say, I believe that we did fund the transfer of the equipment to the ERNR fund. These and other items, is that your understanding as well?
I'm not sure, that's why.
We could double check. I think we did. I think they're there.
All right. Thank you for your question, though, Kevin.
Mr. Pestinger, you have two minutes if you'd like to add any additional final comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Sheriff Snazza. Follow-up to that would be, are you aware of which other police organizations or law enforcement organizations in the state of Washington make use of noise suppressors?
The format is just four minutes of asking what questions, sheriff follows up, and then you can just make a rebuttal or a comment or whatever. We don't go back question by question, unfortunately.
Any closing comments, sir?
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate you participating this afternoon.
I don't think we have any other commenters, so we will now go on to the budget for the coroner. But before I do, I want to thank Sheriff Snazza and Under Sheriff Redita for being here. Okay, coroner's budget. In the corner, Gary Warmack is with us this afternoon.
I think you showed your screen.
I didn't? Oh, I didn't. Uh-oh. Now it's, now it's going to be hard to get it up. And why didn't it? So my computer is not allowing me to share my screen now. Let's just try one more time.
You got it.
There it is. And it's going to go to the start. Haha, okay, back on track. So, coroner's budget. The coroner reviews and investigates deaths occurring in Thurston County. It's a very high-level description of what the coroner's office does. This budget adds quite a bit of funding for the coroner's office. The board has added a forensic pathologist and a lead forensic autopsy technician. The office assistant position is increased from half-time to full-time to provide support to the office. There is funding for a new transport vehicle. There's an increase in supplies, which are necessary to continue the operation of the office. And this budget provides premium pay for a lead deputy coroner. There are 9.5 positions in '22, and that increases to 10 positions in 2023. increases to 10 positions in 2023. 1.7 million roughly in general fund funding in each year. And the coroner's office is funded 100% from the general fund, so the same amount is the total. And the coroner is with us. And Gary, I'm going to turn it over to you. Thanks for being here.
Yep. Thanks, Robin. Thank you, commissioners, for your time and energy in working through the budget cycle. I don't envy the positions you are in in making such difficult decisions. A little bit about my office, I'm going to back up a little bit. Prior to COVID, we did have a, an autopsy morgue technician who was the autopsy tech who assisted in autopsies. For the general public, it's basically a surgical assistant. So this person assists the pathologist in autopsies. We lost that individual to COVID. And when we lost him, my investigators were required to assist in the autopsy room. So it took them away from their cases. And doing so, that created a huge caseload backup. So currently, we have probably 300 or 400 cases that are still outstanding that need to be closed. Having a forensic pathologist on site is going to be a big change here for Thurston County because one of our main budget drivers is professional services that we pay out. Having a forensic pathologist on site, we can probably start saving money six to seven months into the year by paying this individual instead of paying piecemeal per autopsy. Currently, we are paying $1,700 per autopsy. Once we get the pathologist, that disappears and we just pay them a salary. Having the pathologist on site has the potential to create a revenue source for the county. Nationally, there is a shortage of forensic pathologists. And currently, the pathologist only travel up and down the I-5 corridor. So nobody is driving east of the mountains and nobody is driving west to the coast or up north to the peninsula. So right now, we are working with Grace Harbor County to bring their cases here. And we've been working with Clallum County, who are bringing their cases all the way down here to Thurston County to provide them forensic service needs. So our budget drivers are professional services, overtime, and supplies. We have seen a huge increase in overdose deaths here in Thurston County and a very large homeless population death also. And all of those cases require investigations and autopsies. And I have six dedicated full-time investigators to manage a 24/7 operation 365 days a year. If someone calls in sick or there's one to two people away on training, there's going to be overtime shifts that are going to have to be covered to meet the need of the response and the community. That's all I have. If any questions out there?
Board members?
I don't have any questions, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, coroner, for your service. Couple of variety of questions, actually. How many people actually die in Thurston County on, let's say, a typical year? And as you stated, there's a large increase in homeless deaths and overdoses. I'm presuming that there, from what I'd heard, there's also a significant increase in suicide that has occurred, perhaps focused on a younger group of people through this COVID time or such. I presume all the suicides also include the autopsy process and everything. I'm making a statement here first, is I don't know how you possibly do it with that crew, let alone perhaps needing a couple more people for that 24-hour-a-day service that you're providing. But I did take note that you recently got some type of an X-ray machine or some type of a scanning machine for you. Is, in an ideal situation, do you need to have more than just one? Do you need two extra people or three extra people? What is it that would really make it possible? We have a growing county and your level of employees has not really grown with the population growth that's occurred in the county. And so, and are you doing all the services also for the cities, you know, and other areas? Are those all on you to take care of all of it? And so I appreciate what you're doing, but there's a lot of questions as to what's really going on. And I guess one last question I'm going to ask because we had this supposed issue about potential massive death related to COVID. What has the actual impact been to the typical number of deaths per year to the COVID part of it? Or perhaps you'll tell me that a lot of those deaths were associated with other conditions, which would normally be dying during a certain time. Just some of those questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pettit. Your first question is how many deaths in Thurston County? We will probably record right around 2,800 deaths here in Thurston County. And for the record, every death that occurs here is investigated by our office. It doesn't mean there's a full investigation, but all the information of that individual is documented here and it's in a tier level. So if that individual meets a different tier, then there's a different side of an investigation, whether it be there's no family, indigent, unclaimed, or it's a unnatural event, the homicide, suicides, overdoses, and things like that. So just a regular death of somebody who dies at St. Peter's Hospital, that information is reported to us. And then we're required to fill blanks in our case management system that would start it and then close it. And then the other cases would just be ongoing and some will stay open for months. Another delay in closing out cases is our toxicology lab. Even though it's free to the coroner's offices and medical examiners throughout the state, there's a, there's a price to pay. And that is, it's paid for by the families, especially when there's a delay. So right now, State Patrol Crime Lab, their toxicology takes anywhere between three and four months. And part of our professional service fee to get that reduced into a four-week period is that we pay that out of pocket. So we get the results back sooner rather than in three or four months. Another question you asked, Mr. Pettit, was do we investigate city deaths? The answer is yes. We investigate all of Thurston County. So if it's a death in Bucauda or Yount, Tino, my office is there. Every death that we bring in into our care here at the facility, there is a COVID swab that's given. And if it's negative, then it's negative. If it's positive, that information is already been relayed to St. Peter's Hospital, so they can document that. But it doesn't mean it was a COVID death. It just means that this person had COVID at the time of death, and it may be a contributing factor as well. And then the X-ray portion, we purchased an X-ray machine and we purchased a dental X-ray machine to help us with identifying skeletal remains or decomposed bodies.
You have two minutes, Mr. Pettit.
Well, thank you, coroner. I do my math. I always do my math. And so it comes out to roughly eight deaths per day. And I think you have a staff, I think it was like nine?
No, I have six full-time investigators.
Okay.
I did ask for two, but I didn't get them.
Okay. And so we have, we have more deaths per day than we do investigators. And it becomes cumulative. I mean, if we're going to be this, this big county and we're going to be servicing everyone in the county, then we need to have that availability. This, just as a note to you, the commissioners, this is my comment. Earlier this year, one of the people at my, was enjoying the ranch and they went terminal and they wanted to end their last days there. And the coroner's office showed up and they took care of the, in a very polite and professional manner, to help take care of that person and their family as that time came. Death with dignity is obviously something that is also followed up with professional services. I don't know how you run the, well, just in the urban town, outer county, you have like 1,100 miles of distance. You have hundreds of square miles with people sorted everywhere. I don't know how you can possibly expect the coroner's office to perform their duties without some more staff. So I would encourage you to be very supportive of them. They deal with the most delicate of areas that hit families and everything in their whole life. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pettit.
There's a hand in the upper left corner.
It never did come down.
Okay.
Can you hear me, Mr. Pestinger? You have your hands, you have your hand up. You'd like to provide testimony to coroner's budget.
That was raised earlier. There's no way for me to take it down. Sorry. So I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Robin? Is that Robin?
Yes. Thank you. So again, thank you, Gary, for being here this afternoon.
Thank you.
Yes. And it didn't share again. And we're moving to public defense. And I'll talk while I try to figure out how to start from where I'm at. And so, public defense, here we go. Patrick O'Connor is the director of Public Defense. Very simply, Public Defense provides legal defense services to indigent individuals. And of course, it's not as simple as that is to say. The budget this year adds a felony defense attorney and an indigent defense investigator to our Office of Public Defense. It increases the professional development budget and increases indigent defense investigation services hourly rate that we pay to our contractor. There are 45 FTEs in Public Defense in the proposed budget. The budget is partially funded with treatment sales tax. The general fund portion is $8.1 million in '22 and almost $8.1 million in '23. And then in total funds, $8.5 million in '22 and $8.4 million in '23. And I think Patrick is with us this afternoon?
I am. Good afternoon, Robin.
Thanks, Patrick. Go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon, commissioners. Thank you, Robin. My name is Patrick O'Connor. I'm the director of Thurston County Public Defense. And I'm also joined here today by Jose Vargas, our department's fiscal manager. Well, sort of touch upon some things that have already been said, but it goes without saying that, very appreciative of this board and their commitment to public defense and commitment to this community as public servants across the board. This has been obviously an incredibly trying time for my office, but obviously all other offices navigating this pandemic safely while delivering services to our community. And Robin, I'd just like to publicly say thank you to Denise. I know she's retiring, so thank you for your service, Denise, and wish you all the best. Oh, I just highlight some of the things, Robin, that you pointed out. This year and into 2023, we asked for some services and some additional resources on a couple of different fronts. One is I really appreciate the board considering our funding request for a felony defense attorney. Just as a reminder and information for the public, we obviously faced challenges in 2020, trying to expect and anticipate what the impacts of COVID may be. And that particular position was a position that we had in our office. And that individual that previously held that similar position retired. And obviously, as we were preparing for the impacts of the pandemic on our revenues, that position was eliminated. And obviously, what we've gone through in the pandemic has been very challenging in terms of the number of cases that are currently in the system with understandable trial suspensions. We just have a backlog of cases. So this position really helps the Public Defender's Office continue to meet all our constitutional obligations to our clients and the community. So I appreciate that. I also appreciate the board's support to add our second in-house salaried criminal investigator. This has been the vision of this office for several years since I've been the director. We have one position that's been wildly successful and expedient in delivering good justice on behalf of our clients. The second position will only further that and serve over 20 attorneys here in our office. So I'm very grateful for the support. And so is my staff. And I'll speak on behalf of our clients as well. The other investment in our office, which I, again, I can't emphasize what this means when I was able to share the news that it's, our training budget has preliminarily increased, a modest amount. And I'm not asking for any reconsideration of the portion that wasn't funded. But investing in our people is a good investment for not just our department, but for our community. Retention and being competitive as an employer here in Thurston County is a priority of ours. And we have outstanding staff that are dedicated to the work that they do and providing them additional training opportunities and professional development as a commitment on behalf of the county. And I very much appreciate that. The last funding request that we had that the board is preliminarily funded is increasing an hourly rate to our private contract investigators, just to share with the public. We, at the Public Defender's Office, work with dozens of contract independent attorneys here in our community that represent court-appointed clients that were prohibited ethically from representing due to a conflict of interest. And each one of those cases requires independent investigations under the rules of professional conduct. We haven't increased that rate. And we couldn't find exactly when the last time it was increased, but it's been at least 10 years to increase that hourly rate to remain competitive. So our good investigators don't leave and frankly, take employment in other counties. With that, I'll open it up for any questions the board has or any questions from the public.
You know, I'll make one comment. Patrick, being as I'm the longest commissioner here, I just want to make a point of saying it's sure, I'm just going to say it's sure better working with you and your staff. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioner.
Good afternoon. I bring forth this question only because of an experience that occurred a number of years ago, that sometimes you have these contractors that are being paid and their billing process and everything. The question lends itself to, is your current balance that you have within your budget? The question lends itself to, is your current balance that you have within your budget adequate as of right now to take care of any of the current expenses for this year's budget, you know, to finish off this year? Do you have enough funds in there already, or is this something that there needs to be some adjustment for? I do want to make a comment, and I guess I'll just have, ask it in the form of a question. You can confirm what I'm going to say, I believe, which is the choice of providing public defense is not really a choice, but a mandatory requirement that we, as a society, provide that availability to it. Is that correct also? So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pettit. I'll, to answer your first question, right now, the current state of our budget, we have seen a reduction in overall criminal filings sort of across the board in our justice system due to a lot of changes that you've already heard, the pandemic and legislative changes. So, overall, our overall numbers are down historically. So, right now, our current forecasts would not put us in a position where we needed to come back before the board to ask for additional funding to cover professional services outside our office. And we're fairly confident in that number at this point. We'll continue to monitor it as we finish throughout this fiscal year, but at this point, we don't anticipate acquiring any additional funds from the board to cover expenses. As to your second question, you are right in terms of it's an obligation that the county has to provide public defense. It's a constitutional right, obviously, under the Sixth Amendment of the United States Constitution and Article 1, Section 22 of the Washington State Constitution. But I'll take a moment to say it's not just the right to counsel, it's a right to a full defense, and we are very fortunate to live in one of the few states in the country that ensures that the right to an attorney and a right to a defense is a full defense. So, it comes with opportunities for expert services that one may need to defend themselves, investigation services that one may need to defend themselves, and other expenses that come with a full defense. So, and just to take that one step further, as I complimented this board and prior boards too, is that not only does our state have a very strong system of public defense that counties and cities do have to comply with, we've had that support here during my tenure as a director, and our community is better for it.
One last follow-up comment to you, the commissioners, which is during this time where we've had an onslaught of a large group of people move into Thurston County from, in perhaps not the best circumstances, referring to perhaps some of the homeless population, the drug addiction and all of this, I think this particular category brings in a whole another layer of potential clientele for public defense. And like I say, I understand everybody needs a defense and they need a full, a full defense and as such. Appreciated the fact that they provide an investigation as necessary. I hope that, going backwards to another topic, that maybe the prosecutor's office can have the same type of opportunity. And so, with that, I thank the services of public defense.
You're welcome.
Thank you both, Patrick and Jose, for being here this afternoon.
Thank you.
We are going to move on to the last presentation that is part of the...
Are you on it, Robin?
My mic says it's on.
You're good.
Okay. Thank you for asking those. It is very good to check me on those things. So, finally, this afternoon, we have pre-trial services, and Director Mary Ann Clear is with us this afternoon. Pre-trial Services conducts pre-trial investigations and screening and makes recommendations for pre-trial release to the courts. They supervise released defendants, and they connect defendants to community resources. And to help them achieve that last goal, this budget adds a position for a resource hub, and the resource hub is currently under construction in Building 4, should be completed soon, and this funds a position to be able to work the hub. There are 11 FTEs in Pre-Trial Services. It's one of our smaller offices and departments. General funds are just under $1 million a year. They do receive treatment sales tax funding. Total funds are $1.4 million per year. And Mary Ann, I'm going to just turn it straight over to you.
Thank you, Robin. Good afternoon to the board. I want to also echo my colleagues' gratitude to our Board of County Commissioners. I also want to thank the citizens who are here and active in our county government, and I mostly want to thank my staff. My department would not be able to do the work that it does without my hard-working, adaptable, and dedicated staff, many of whom are certified in the national standards and best practices, and also many who are also tenured with our county for 20 years or more and are dedicated and have worked for our county for a long time. So, I also want to say that and also have gratitude to the governing board members who are still on this call. And with that, for the sake of time, open it up to any questions.
We have none, Mary Ann.
And I don't see anybody from the public here present that they have any questions on your budget, so let's move to Zoom. And I don't see anybody on Zoom either. So...
Right.
You got up easy, Mary Ann.
So, you're it.
Here.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just for the public's information, being Mary Ann is here, a big piece of what Mary Ann does every day alleviates jail overcrowding to a degree, and that really does affect our budget in the end. So, thanks for all you do here, Mary Ann.
All right. So, thank you, Mary Ann, and members of your team who are with us this afternoon. This concludes all of the offices and departments in the Law and Justice segment of the budget. I again want to thank all of the members of Law and Justice who joined you this afternoon, all of the hard work each of the offices and departments and their staff did on the budget that was presented to the board. And we're going to wrap, and you have 15 minutes, so I recommend that we recess until 4 o'clock.
And it's going to be a different Zoom for 4 o'clock.
Different Zoom. We'll recess here. We will pick up with assessor, auditor, Commissioner's Office, treasurer, human resources, central services, and information technology in a session that's slated to last from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m.
Public comment, and this comment is more for my seatmates. This is my first budget public hearing process, and I really want us, or really encourage us to look at different times. I heard from different public, members of the public who wished they could have attended the Law and Justice Council budget hearings, but they had to work, so they couldn't attend. And, you know, this is really a hard time for people to attend who work an 8:00 to 5:00. So, I feel if we really want to hear public comment, we need to reconsider changing the times for this maybe next year.
I would say two things to that. One is there is at 6:15 the opportunity for open public comment. Now, you won't be able to necessarily directly get a response from an elected official, but I'm sure the elected officials will follow up with citizens who ask questions during that session if they've got a chance to look at the budget book and have questions about it or comment. That's one thing. Second is this is 12 hours' worth of hearings, and I'm not sure how we would get them all in after 5:00 p.m. because it's six hours today and six hours tomorrow. So, that's just a challenge we've had. We have had that discussion in the past, but it's definitely worthy of consider breaking it maybe into three or trying to figure out a way.
Yeah, that's something the board may consider next year as to how you can probably modify, adjust. But yeah, and with all due respect, that question is common, you know, on a yearly basis, but it's somewhat challenging, whether the time can be shifted on some specific offices and departments. That's something that we may want to work with the board next year.
Yeah, it takes us 12 hours to get through all the offices and departments, so that's just the amount of time that we have to spit in, so we can certainly discuss other ways. Commissioner Edwards?
I guess, being we're all making a comment, I like what Commissioner May he had to say, and I think that's worth thinking about how we could adjust that. But I want to compliment Robin. How in the heck did you get it figured out to where we're actually getting done at the time you said? So, kudos to you, ma'am.
Thank you. I can't take all the credit.
I know, but still, takes a team leader.
It takes a whole team.
Well, if we had four or five commenters per subject, we wouldn't be done.
We'd be going overtime.
We would be needing maybe 24 hours' worth of comment. It's just something, and we would have to cut down the time for sure. We would not be able to give six minutes per citizen, per department. So, we're adjusting things based on what we see, and we will continue to make those adjustments. All right, thanks, everybody. 10 minutes, we'll be back with all those other general government...
With a new Zoom, eh?
Yep, new Zoom. We're in recess.
Thanks, everyone.